Zoning Board of Adjustment, April meeting. We have, we have a full agenda tonight. I'd first like to introduce everyone who's on the board, who is present. And now I can't see people.
Okay, I will stop sharing. Is that better?
That's better. Please, now I know who's here. So, first of all, Joanna Erin Darcek is not chairing our meeting, but she's running the Zoom portion. So, that's Joanna right there nodding in the black scarf. And then we have Terry Bonzer, who's a member of the board. Where's your mom? She's not on my thing here.
Oh, she's not? Well, she's right next to you on my screen.
It looks like me, you, Kevin.
I've unmuted you.
Hi. Hi there. Oh, thank you there. You speak now, you're up. And this is Teresa Bascom, who's the Vice Chairman of the Board. And then we have, I've already done Terry, and we have Raylene, who's for some reason not showing. Raylene, are you there? Can you hear me? There you go. There's Raylene. Should be Rice. So, all of you who are applicants should know that at a hearing, you have a right to a full board if you want one. We can take it up again at our next meeting, which will be in May. Or you can go ahead with a board of four. We do have a quorum here. Three is a quorum, and we have four members of the board present. So, before the beginning of your particular hearing, we have three hearings tonight. Did you want me to stop, Kevin?
Okay.
I will ask you if you want to go forward with a board of four. It's your option to have it continued. Or you can go forward. So, the first item on our agenda this evening is, where's my agenda? I printed it out. Is election of officers. So, this is not a hearing. This is just the board doing some of its business. So, we have, we usually elect our officers in April. We also usually review our bylaws and rules of procedure, but I asked Joanna to save that for next month so that you all would have time to review them before we meet, because we just talked about it a couple of days ago. It didn't seem fair to make you have to do it on a Sunday. So, going forward, would anyone like to nominate anyone for chairman or vice chair? We'll take a nomination from the floor. We'll have a second, and we'll vote on it, just like we do all motions. Teresa?
Can I nominate?
I called on Teresa. I didn't see your hand, Raylene.
That's okay. I didn't have my video on.
That's okay. Ken, go ahead.
Okay, she's acquiescing to you. You probably both had your hand up at the same time. I just could not see you.
Not a worry.
But go ahead.
You want a nomination for chair?
Yes.
I nominate Bonnie Winona.
Second.
So, a motion has been made and seconded to nominate Bonnie Winona as chairman of the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Um, all those opposed? Looks like three to, three to one abstention. And now I'm looking for a second motion nominating someone for vice chair.
I'll nominate Teresa Bascom.
Thank you, Terry. Terry has nominated Teresa Bascom. Do I have a second? I'll second that. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I agree.
Opposed? Okay, so Kevin was voting on that, and I should have recognized also, maybe that's why he had his hand up before. Is he muted? Kevin is an alternate on our board, and for those, those orders of business that do not involve him, he may be seated. I'm going to seat you as a member of the board. Did you vote on the chairman, Kevin?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so Joanna, did you get his vote too for that?
I did. I didn't even think about the fact that he's an alternate.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kevin. I should have, I should have spoken up and stated that for all of those present. So, we have now two new officers, myself as chairman and Teresa Bascom as vice chairman.
So, Bonnie?
Yes?
You're seating Kevin for Peter, is that correct? Because that needs to go into the minutes.
That is correct. That's correct.
Okay.
We have one empty seat here.
So, we do currently have a full board.
We do have a full board, except not on Kevin's case.
Correct.
He can't sit on his own case, obviously.
Correct.
So, any other members of the public here, just know that we do have a full board at this point in time. Okay. So, we do our minutes later? Yes?
Yes.
Public hearings. I'm going to open the first public hearing, which is case number 20005-VA. It is a, it is an application, it is, we are to consider a continuation request by Christian Smith. He is the applicant from Langdon Construction, L, B, Section 5A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to allow the frontage subdivision application to proceed with the Nottingham Planning Board without a hydrologic study where the ordinance stated one shall be required. Property is located at 209 Mill Pond Road and Kelsey Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map 24 lot 141, sub lot T. Is Mr. Smith here, Joanna?
I'm sorry?
Is Mr. Smith present?
No.
No. Okay, but it is my understanding that he wishes to come before our board in person. Is that right?
Correct.
He's asking for a continuance, and he's hoping that by next month, we will be meeting in person. So, he's requesting the continuance, and I'm, I'm happy to entertain a motion, one way or the other, to meet his request or not. Teresa?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the request from Christian O. Smith to continue case 20-5005 VA from tonight, April 21st, 2020, to May 19th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, as requested.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to continue this case to May, is it 19th or 27th?
19th is what they've written.
Can I ask a question?
May?
I just need some clarification. I've looked up some material, but I want to make sure that I understand that that this is, the continuation is with the zoning board to review it prior to going to the planning board?
That's the only thing we can continue. Our board, yeah.
So, we, we get to look at this issue as a board later?
Correct. He doesn't want to, he doesn't want to do it by Zoom. He wants to do it in person.
Okay. That's what I assumed was.
He's just looking for a delay so that he can meet with us personally.
Okay, but I wanted to make sure I understood what I was voting on before I did. It's just a matter of waiting until we can meet face to face.
Right. Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to continue the application.
Neil's up next.
Oh, I thought you were going to post, because he didn't want to do it on Zoom.
The other guy, excuse me. 305.
Who's speaking, Joanna?
I just muted him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we're not in public hearing yet, people who are listening out there. So, this discussion is only for the board, and if you want to talk about it between yourselves, just do it quietly.
I muted all so that people could vote, not realizing that it was unmuting the public too.
Right. This is a learning curve, this system. All those in favor of the motion to?
Wait, wait. I have a question. One more question. If people who are listening have anything to say about this, can they? Can they ask questions or address the?
No, this is not a public, well, it is a public hearing, but it's.
I just didn't know if the people who were talking were talking about this or talking about something else, because I couldn't understand it.
I don't know. Is there anyone, is there, is there a member of the public out there who wishes to speak to this continuation? Joanna, can you see any answer?
There is no answer.
Okay, so apparently, we will say no. And thank you for that point of order. I should have requested anyone to speak who wanted to. Although, may we vote now? All those in favor of continuing the application from Langdon Construction, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, now I'm going to open the second hearing tonight. I will make room for a public comment in this one. We have an application to consider case 20-006-VA, an application from Anilio and Karen Collins for variance requests from Article 2, Section C2 of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage 10 feet from the rear property line, whereas 20 feet is required. The property is located at 3 Tuckaway Shores Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 70 lot 28. Is there, is, is there someone here to present this case to the board? We usually ask the applicants to present their case. Get your maps out, get your.
This is Neil speaking.
Thank you. This is Neil. Okay. Hi, Neil. So, what we will do is, we will have you present your case. You can use the application that you presented to help you, like we like you to show us on maps if you have them. Explain why you need this. Interrupting me?
Yeah. Do you want me to show the plan on the screen or let Neil talk first and then show it if needed?
I think we should leave that up to Neil. Okay.
Well.
If you wanted to put up a visual for us, please ask her to do it.
Okay, I will.
And after you're done speaking, I'm going to let any abutters who object to your request speak. And anybody in favor speak, and then you can rebut them at the end.
Okay.
Then the board can ask you questions at any point during your presentation.
That's fine.
Oftentimes, we ask questions, it's not that we're hounding you or anything. We're just looking for more clarity usually.
Okay.
You got it?
Got it.
Okay, so go.
And what I'm trying to do is, in the back of my house, is put a garage on or not connected, a standalone garage. And being behind my house is the best location, because it can't be seen from the street, and it's the furthest location, and plenty far enough from the lake. And I think that'll work, and I won't disrupt any of the neighbors or any of the property around me by doing it that way.
So, may I interrupt you for a second, because I had a question looking at your packet? The deed that was given to us is in the name of Neil and Judith, but the application is signed by Karen.
Well, that has been, maybe the paperwork didn't catch up with you guys, but that has been changed on my, on my tax notice some time ago.
Okay, so that Karen is an owner with you?
Yes.
And you're?
And she's right beside me.
Okay, hi Karen.
Hi.
And, yeah, that's been changed to my tax bill some time ago.
Okay, so there, so the deed does not reflect that, however.
Oh, okay. That's right. It probably doesn't. I never even thought of it that, I didn't even thought of it. But that'll have to be changed. And as far as the, the disruption to my own property, it, the way it's set up in the back, it shouldn't, it won't disrupt my property at all, at all. I wouldn't need to do any blasting, because we're going to put a monolithic, monolithic floor in, and that should solve that problem. Lay it right on the ground. I think that should do it. If you have any questions?
So, one of the things that you have to prove or convince the board about is that your variance request meets the criteria specified by law. Sorry, Terry, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I had one question. I noticed, you know, on his application, it says the rear line, but, but when you look at the map, it appears he's going to be 10 feet from the sideline too.
Is that correct?
I'm pulling the map out. Joanna, if you could pull that map out. There is a drawing on the map. Okay, let me see if I can show you, guys. Maybe you could show. Can you help? Do you have it, Joanna?
I don't get it right now.
Let me see if I can read this. I can't bring it down. Can you bring it down?
Yep.
Okay, hold it right there.
This area?
Yes. And this is where I need the 10 feet, right here. The extra 10.
So, this is the rear?
Yes.
What about here? Plenty of what? Okay.
This is where the 16-foot statement here is? 15?
That's correct.
And you're going to put a garage in there, but it's going to be 10 feet from the?
Correct.
Okay.
On the map, though, it's in the back more. That's the leach field in the front. That's, oh, okay. See, I am, good. Bring it down some more then. So, go up. Yeah.
So, here's the bend run.
Yep. Go the other way.
Going?
Towards the existing gravel driveway?
All right. Hold on. Here's, here we go. Here's, see, right here is the, where the garage is planned to go.
Where it says 105.
16 by 32.
10 foot. Okay.
It didn't come out that well on the copy, but if you can see the 16?
Oh, right here.
Yes, right here. And it shows 10 feet on one side and 10 feet in the back. That's it there, exactly.
So.
And I need, it'll give me, after I get the variance, I'll be 10 feet away.
So, 10, 10 there and 10 here?
10 is a drive, my driveway, that's mine anyway.
So, this corner that was just drawn, the blue?
Yep.
Rectangle that was just drawn.
Yes.
The corner on the lower left is 10 feet. Then the wall, the 32 feet is 10 feet from the property line.
The back property line, correct.
Right. And the 10 feet is from the side property line. And there's an abutter next there?
Yeah, buddy, with the other 10 feet is me.
This 10 feet? Vacant lot here. Okay.
Yes. But you, you still need a variance on that side, so I'm just saying that. It's mine. Right. The 16 by 32, and you can't see, if you come down to that dot. Okay, over, down below that dot here is my property. Right, but, but there is a property line there, so that's the problem. On the side.
Oh, Terry, what you're suggesting is that he needs to be asking for two variances.
Yeah, I just say, when we do our motion, we should do back, you know, rear and sidelines. That's all.
Right. Yeah, okay. So, if I could go back to my original question about ownership. So, I'm looking at the copy of the, of the tax card that we were given in your packet, Neil. And it only has you listed on it. It does not have Karen.
Okay.
And so, I'm wondering if Judith was the original owner, but no longer is, there should be some kind of deed that?
Well, I, some time ago, I brought in the death notice so I could change this.
Oh, she died?
For Judith.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, you brought it into the town hall? Well, maybe we can just have, you know, one of our charges, make sure we're not granting things to?
Oh, understood.
One owner and not the other. So, I hear you. It's, it's just not in here. Joanna, are you hearing this?
Yes.
Already brought it into the town, and that's why. So, the property is, you're the sole owner then, is that correct?
Well, if, if I'm the only name on that property, yes, I'd be the sole owner.
You were, you were, you and Judith were on the deed that we were given, and if that's the deed we have, and she's deceased?
Yes, she's deceased.
Then you were tenants by the entirety, which is, in New Hampshire, the same thing as joint tenants. We don't have tenants by the entirety. So, that would mean, yes, it would be your property. But it would be, but I would like to make our decisions subject to us getting a copy of that death notice.
Well, I can mail, I can put it in the mail tomorrow, fax it, or however you like. I can probably scan it too. Because I've got a copy of it, and I thought, maybe because I'm mixed up a little bit myself, but I did bring it in to change the tax bill.
Oh, yeah. The tax bill in your name.
Yes. And I'm bringing it, it's coming back to me. I apologize.
That's okay.
But the deed was not affected with that change, apparently.
No, because when somebody dies with that kind of a deed, it just, it's automatically yours.
Yeah, okay.
But we have no way of knowing that, since the deed has her name and the application has Karen's name.
Okay, can I, can I scan that to your email, Joanna, or where should it go?
Yeah, go ahead and send it to my email.
Yes, send it to Joanna. You can even scan it and email it to her.
Yes, I will.
Yeah. So, continue, please. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
Kind of an important detail for us.
Yeah. And all I'm trying to, again, all I'm trying to do is build a single car garage in the back. And, and the way I think I planned it out would be no disruption to any abutters, and they, I've got a few calls from some of them just to ask me about it. And no disturbance to the lake, and no disturbance really to my own property, because they don't have to blast anything. So, I'm hoping that'll be enough to?
Can I ask you, can I ask you to explain, for those of us who do not do construction work, what this floor, this floor that you're talking about is? Is it poured concrete?
No. Well, I'm not a construction person. I'm the homeowner, so I'm only repeating what the contractor told me was going to be the best thing. And it's what they call a monolithic floor, and it's a floating floor.
Right, a floating floor.
Put it on, put it on the property without having to blast at level and do all of that, I believe. And of course, the expense would be less than a blast.
Digging a foundation under it or pouring a wall. So, do any other members of the board have questions? If not, I'm going to ask Mr. Collins to go over the five criteria. We are required to act on your application, subject to the five criteria that's on your variance request.
Kevin's trying to speak.
Pardon?
Kevin is trying to speak.
I can't see Kevin. Okay.
All right. Just to be clear, did you say that you own the property on the side where it says 158 feet on the map?
I'd have to look at the whole map. Is there a drive between it?
On the bottom side that we were looking at earlier.
Yeah, let me see if I can. Yes, it's, it says an existing travelway is beside it, right here.
Can you physically own that property also? So, the abutters are on the side that says 105?
That's correct.
126, okay?
Yes, correct.
On the same map, not shown in the corner, I assume the two properties from 105 feet and 158 go down to roughly a 90 degree?
Yeah, it doesn't show up, but it's roughly 90 degrees here.
So, from the back of the building down to that point, I'm just doing a little geometry. I assume it's more than 20?
Between, hold on a minute. From the bottom is, to the other property line is more than 20, correct?
Okay.
We're done, Kevin? Do you have any questions?
Do we do the five criteria and then the abutters, or vice versa, Bonnie?
I do the five criteria and then the abutters.
Thank you.
Okay, because they could object to anything in there as well, if they, if something wasn't factual or whatever. Neil, could you go forward? Raylene, did you need to say something? Your name came up on the bottom here. Terry's there. Pretty good, Terry? I'm going to ask Neil now to go forward with presenting to us the five criteria with his variance request.
Okay.
Use the notes you made on your application. That's perfectly fine.
Okay, and the first criteria, variance would not be contrary to the public interest? Is that what we're talking? Can you go down from there?
Yes.
And as I, as I have written that there is, on my property, that's the only location that I could put it. And in, at the same token, it'll be out of the view of Tuckaway Shore Road and further away from the lake. No disturbance to my own property. And the second request, the ordinance is observed by not altering the landscaping of the surrounding area. Nothing will be altered, no, not even a tree has to come down. And again, it can't be seen from the street. And it was a, wanting a two-car garage, but of course, the way this is set up, I could only could put a one-car garage in. And as far as, and as far again, is item number four is, there's only two houses near my property, and neither one of them will even be able to see the garage.
Neither one of them, did you say?
Excuse me?
Did you say neither one of them?
Neither, the two houses that are near my property, neither one of them will be able to see the garage from the street or from the homes.
Is that due to woodland or block in the view?
Excuse me?
He asked, you want to say it again, Kevin?
You mentioned your, your brother won't be able to see it. Is that because of the house blocks it from both?
And now the last one?
And of course, the variance is needed because of the, I couldn't build a single car garage without that five feet. I just needed the, I mean, the 10 feet. I just needed the extra 10 feet. And that would allow me to put the building up. Other than, without the 10 feet, I just wouldn't have the property to build this garage.
Out of curiosity, what are you doing currently about?
Out of curiosity, what are you doing currently about, without a garage?
I'm, I'm, uh, well, the purpose for the garages do, uh, actually house a 1963 Thunderbird, which is now, which is now in store.
Awesome. Okay. So it's not a garage that you're going to be going in and out of?
No.
Yeah, it's a storage garage. Any board members have further questions of Mr. Collins at this time? If not, I'm going to open up, um, the discussion to any abutters that may be present, anyone wishes to speak for this variance? Please, now, signal to Joanna. Put it in the chat. See everybody else, Joanna?
Yeah, um, Cal is the only other person, and he is not saying anything at the moment.
Okay, so is there anyone who wishes to speak against this application? See anybody there, Joanna?
No.
So we have no one from the public who wishes to speak. We have no letters from anyone for or against Joanna?
No.
Okay. Do any members of the board have other questions of Mr. Collins?
Okay, Teresa does.
No, I, it's not a question. I just, it's a point of clarification, um, for Mr. Collins. On your application for the variance request on number two, you, for the spirit of the ordinance, you listed not altering the landscape, and just so you're aware, the, the variance request for section C2 is on setbacks, which doesn't really pertain to landscape. It's more of a crowding lots and affecting your neighboring, neighbor's property, and not, not landscape. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
He, he does say that they won't be, that the garage will not be seen.
Right, but it, his primary comment had been not seen, and not seen from altering the landscape, so I just wanted that to be a little more clear.
So if there are no further questions, I'm going to, the public hearing portion of this hearing closed. Us, we can discuss, anyone can discuss or ask any questions of each other. Public hearing is now closed, and do any members of the board have anything they wish to say regarding the application?
I looked up monolithic flooring, and it, it did mention that it was an industrial-type floor, and it was concrete. Um, so my, it, I didn't see anything that mentioned whether or not you needed a frost level with that? Or is it just stay on top?
Terry?
Yeah, usually that monolithic floor, they go down about a foot around the outside edge, not below the frost line, and then they just pour a four-foot floor. So it's, it's just, there's just, there's just a thicker wall around the outside edge for the walls to sit on. There's no frost wall.
Okay. So they will be disturbing the land some for it, but not the three-foot?
I'd even, yeah, I don't know what, you know, if it's that level or not. Yeah, they might have to go down a foot.
Okay.
But, um, clearly, Teresa, it would have to be allowed. I mean, the board inspector would be looking at that.
Oh, yeah, I just was, I...
Curious.
Well, it mentioned monolithic floor, mono floor, and I'd never heard of mono floor constructions. I looked it up.
I, I didn't hear it before this time either, so...
No.
Something new every day.
Yeah. Um, so Cal just typed in, he's all for it. His house sits several feet higher, so we can't see it from here.
Cal's in a butter?
Yes.
Okay. I can't see what he typed. Interesting. So we have an abutter who spoke in favor after the public hearing was closed, but that's okay. So now, if no other members of the board wish to address any issues about this application, I will entertain a motion from someone, please. Teresa?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request from, and now, Neil and Karen Collins for a variance request from article two, C2 of the Nottingham zoning, zoning ordinance to permit construction of a garage 10 feet from the rear property and 10 feet from a sideline property where 20 feet is required. The property is located at three Tuckaway Shores Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 70 lot 28. The case number is 20 dash 006A VA. And a condition is to have corrected tax cards, names on the tax card.
Death certificate on the person on the deed.
And, and the deed.
Tax cards don't mean anything, but the deed, the death certificate is really what we need, if you had, if you, by Joanna, you know, it's subject to providing us with a death certificate on.
I'll get that to you.
Sorry, guys. Hey!
I'll get that to you, Joanna.
Okay. Yeah, and then... To clarify, it's, um, to provide the death certificate to the land use clerk. Is that what the condition is?
That's totally right.
For...
The deed. Not for the deed, for Judith Collins, who is the other owner on the deed.
Right.
Was the other owner. Yeah, I didn't hear you say Judith. Sorry, my dogs bark it.
That's okay.
Knows what they're barking at. There's nothing out there.
They saw a squirrel.
Heard one. I think the squirrels are in bed, actually.
All right, I've made a motion. We're looking for a second now.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the application of Neil Collins, subject to the conditions of the motion, which include providing a death certificate for Judith Collins. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Did you oppose, Raylene? I can't hear her.
Oh, hold on.
I still can't hear you.
I am supporting, not opposing.
Okay. I can't see Kevin either. Did you see how he voted?
Yes, he voted aye.
Okay, so we have five yeses.
Yes.
So, Mr. Collins, your application has been approved?
And thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Forty-five day?
You don't have to go through the five, um, items.
He already did.
He did, yes.
He did.
On us voting by the five criteria.
Haven't, have we, have we been doing that regularly? I get mixed up. We go back and forth.
We've been doing both.
So, let's say that we voted for the motion in general, um, let's vote on all the five criteria together.
Okay.
Everybody wants me to do it separately. I assume if you all voted yes on the motion that was made, that you agree with the five criteria. Is that reasonable?
I agree. It's just that in the past, we've done...
Okay, so...
...the criteria, so I was just asking for clarification. I'm not making...
We're gonna, we're gonna, I move that we, uh, vote to approve or disapprove the five criteria as presented by Mr. Collins. Oh, is there a second?
To approve. You want to win approve, right?
I said approve.
Okay, but you said also disapprove, but I, I agree.
I didn't say disapprove. Yeah, we approve of the, oh, sorry. We approve the five criteria as presented by the applicant, Mr. Collins. All those, Terry has seconded it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Though I can't see Kevin again, but that was unanimous, from what I can tell. Kevin voted in favor. Yeah, so, sorry about that. I'm, I'm like a little, I'm not exactly in the same groove as we are when we're being together.
It's being at home.
Yes, it's weird, dog barking.
It's being isolated. We can't remember how to communicate.
So, Mr. Collins, you're approved. Um, there, there is a 45-day window, it used to be 30, in which anyone can disagree with us, and, um, take it to, either ask us to be here, or take it to Superior Court. So if you start your project before that window is closed in 45 days, you do it at your own peril, it, it's not normal. It's not usual that someone does that, but there, that is the right, any citizen out there to disagree with our decision.
Okay.
You understand that?
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Uh, we have a third case to consider this evening, case number 20 dash 007 dash VA, an application from Kevin Bassett, who I now unseat from the board, now going to a four member of the board. For, for variance requests from article two, section C2B, the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a barn and attached carport, where such a structure is not permitted without a primary structure, and from article two, C1, to permit the structure on a private road. Property is located at, at off Dollaf Dam Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire. It's identified as tax map 70 lot 25. So I'm going to allow the applicant, Mr. Bassett, to present his case to the board with any kind of visual aids that you have for us. Kevin, you know, walk us through this like you were an engineer, and we were a bunch of laypeople.
Okay. Um, just for a little bit of clarity, I did revise the building application, and I gave Joanna... It's still up in the air whether it's going to be attached or detached, and...
What's going to be attached or detached?
Um, sorry.
Static on the line suddenly.
There is, there is, there's two, two structures that I'm going in for, a barn and, and a, um, roof to put a cover on it.
And a roof application. You're, you're cutting out every, sorry, you, something technical wrong with Joanna with my...
I have a very large grinding noise on, on, as other people have a grinding.
It's like, wah, wah, wah.
Yes.
Like every third word gets cut out.
Okay, um, let me try muting everybody but Kevin.
I'm still here. Do you still hear it?
Oh, I'm, I'm muted. Everybody put your hand up if you can hear Kevin. Okay, good, sounds... I can't hear you, Teresa. Can you hear me, Kevin?
Yes, I can.
And I can hear you, and I think everyone can hear you, so you can go forward.
Okay. I'll start over. The application, um, in the first sentence, uh, to permit the construction of a barn and attached carport, um, I have broached that with the building inspector. Because I haven't, you know, broken ground, there is some, um, some boulders and such, and, you know, that if, it may not be allowed to be attached, so just a little leeway, it'll probably be detached. It'll be co- co- located, um, but it just may not be attached, per se.
Be more like a, a second shed.
Yes. So, uh, Joanna, can you bring up the plot plan? I think everyone has it in their package anyways. And, um, the first location is a, you know, Google map with an orange square, just showing the location of roughly the 55 acres. Second page... Is, in the middle there is the two structures. The arrow is coming off of Lamprey, which comes off of Dollaf. And my physical location is, is south of the 68 in green. It's labeled 15 is where I physically, is my residence.
Wait a minute, I don't see 15.
Um, in the green.
I do, I see it.
Almost all the way down. Yeah.
68.
Well, I live at the end of Shore Drive.
Yeah, I've been down there once for some other reason. I didn't go down this time, but, so you're at lot number what, please? 15?
Yes.
Okay.
It's 101 Shore Drive.
And then does the road kind of disappear after your house, or what?
Yeah, yeah, it stops at my house.
Yeah. So your house is a bit away from this barn?
Correct. I have to get to it by road for the most part.
Okay.
There is a, there is a, you know, walk and drive, but, but it's really not that far.
Can you recite that?
The land has been logged, you know, numerous times through the years, so there's a, there's a logging road, logging path, per se, off of Lamprey, um, that would eventually have the curb cut.
So, can I ask you a question, Kevin? Your 50, is it 58 acres, your land?
55, right in, right underneath the 25.
So it includes all of this big white piece under the 68?
To the right of the 68, yes.
To the right of the 68, um, yeah. Okay, so, and then, are you abut all of those little lots at the, around the lake?
Correct.
Okay.
If you recall, the last time I was in front of the zoning board, we were getting a variance for four abutters for a lot line adjustment.
Right. So, this parcel does abut your residence?
Um, yes, essentially, laid down at the point where you see 15.
Got it.
Very short abut, right?
Correct.
And the, and the purpose of these barns and carport is just a barn for storage and carport for...
Yeah, a barn for, for boat and tractor, and carport for camper.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The carport will be, will be open, you know, basically a post, a roof on post.
Better stick it down if, in case the wind comes along.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be in the ground.
And I'm, and it's wooded now, or cleared?
Um, a little bit of both. I have taken down some, some small trees so I could lay out some lines, and, and like I say, it has been milled in, uh, you know, before I bought it.
Thank you. Teresa, do you have a question?
I do. Kevin, you mentioned that you have the request before us for the lot line adjustment. I, I'm, I'm just wondering, if we take action on this, how does that affect your other application? Because I thought you couldn't have, um, activity within so much time on a property to, to variances or, or actions.
Nothing like that's been mentioned to me.
Joanna?
I believe we go to the planning board on the 13th of May.
He's asking for a variance to the frontage because it's private roads.
Oh, I, I get that. I get that. But I, I was... But I, I was, and I tried looking for it in my book, but I couldn't figure out where to find that information. I know that if you subdivide or have a lot line adjustment, then you can't have any further actions within a certain number of years, and I forget what that, that timeframe is right now. But I wondered if this action was in any way similar or had that kind of an impact on his property. Joanna, can you answer that? Did Joanna go away?
No, I don't know if she can hear you. Can you hear your mom, Joanna?
I'm muted, sorry, I didn't realize I'm muted myself.
Okay.
Here now. So no, that doesn't affect it. So think of like Paul England's case or, or the Mill Pond Road case, where they're going, coming in for a variance request for the hydrogeological study, but they're still in the case for a, for subdivision.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to have an impact on this.
Absolutely, no.
Or this on those.
No, no, it won't.
Okay. And do you remember?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What is the timeframe, do you remember? Once there's been a lot line adjustment or subdivision?
I think it's four or five years, one of the
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Kevin, can I ask you, I'm, I'm looking at the letter that Mr. Sylvia gave you denying your request for a building permit. And at the bottom he has note, these denials are referenced under the new zoning articles that recently went into effect. And wasn't your application on, before the board, before these articles were, these new articles were voted on? Those are my two questions. Because I, I would think they would be irrelevant if they were.
I'm not seeing what you see, Bonnie.
Do you have the letter that Mr. Dale Sylvia wrote to you?
I'm not, not informed.
I have it, if you want me to pull that up.
Can you put it on, can you put it up in front of us?
Yeah, the date.
It's in our package.
Hello. The data, the date on his application is three twenty-six. Our town election, when we voted on those changes, was three twelve.
Three ten.
Three ten, three ten. So we had voted as a town on those new changes on three ten, and his application came in on three twenty-six.
What were the changes that this is in conflict with? They want you to have a primary residence and they didn't want it before, or what?
They wanted there to be a primary residence on a property that was having any other structures placed on it. Is that correct, Joanna?
Yes, so, so as you can see, it says, oh, actually, you probably can't see it yet, hang on. I didn't share it. There we go. Okay, so as you can see, it says a storage structure is not listed as a permitted use without a primary structure. That is new from the, the new zoning changes. The other one is not, so this one is the only one that is new.
Terry, you broke up there.
I have one question.
Go for it.
Yeah, on the, I mean, they passed, but we haven't finished our town meeting, so do those actually come into effect?
If anyone should know the answer, it is I, but I do not.
Because we continue that town meeting, we haven't
Teresa?
They actually go into effect and are binding once they've been approved of by the planning board. So once the planning board sets forward the, the wording for the, for the town to vote on, at that point, those things become binding. And once the voters have voted on them, then they're all set, they are anyway going forward. So even though our town meeting hasn't been closed, because they were already in effect with the planning board, they're in effect.
Right, but if one had down and, you know, that would have been like in limbo because they were in effect by the top planning board, but the people had voted them down and, you know, but they didn't, I mean, they all passed.
Right.
I think we have that clarified, has anyone else have? So.
Don't you want to go through the criteria?
I'm just going to ask him to go through the criteria. Do you have a question, Raylene?
I just wanted some clarification on the conversation that just occurred about that the planning board approved it. It was submitted to the town for election and the town approved it. And, but the town meeting did not.
Town meeting, it doesn't
What Terry was pointing out. Had the town meeting, it's kind of part of the election process. I adjourn, adjourn the election to the town meeting, and we haven't had a town meeting yet.
So what is the status of this then if
Teresa just explained it?
I know, and that, I just needed it re-explained, because I, I got bits and pieces of it.
Would you like to re-explain, Teresa?
Once, once the planning board goes through and sets these, these changes in motion, they are in effect. And it's up to the voters to fully agree or not to agree. They've agreed on them, so they're in effect anyway. It's the town, the town meeting itself really doesn't have anything to do with it, except it's a closed loop of the town meetings.
Right, but, but for example, at the town meeting, they could not change what's already approved.
Correct.
A priori decision.
Right, it wouldn't even be brought up at a town meeting, likely, unless somebody had a, had a big itch over it.
Law is zoning, zoning ordinances must be on the paper ballot, that's the law.
Okay.
In any case, Mr. Sylvia has noted that on the letter to
That's fine, I just
Asking for a variance to that
Right.
ordinance. Okay, that article in the zoning ordinance, so that's part of his application anyway.
Joanna, can you mute us all again and have Kevin go on for the five criteria?
Sure.
Because we're hearing that noise again.
Okay. Add the stone, though.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Just to restate, as I see it, the variance, number one is to put a storage structure, not permitted without a primary structure. And number two, no building on a private road. Variance would not be contrary to the public interest because having a barn on a private road does not increase traffic, will put burden on the school system, but will provide an increase in land taxes. Spirit of the ordinance. This Article Two, C one, E and F, accessory use of buildings and farming and related agricultural uses is permitted with a residence, and my resident abuts tax map seventy lot twenty-five. Then the spirit of the ordinance is preserved. Residential justice is done. My residential property is less than an acre. And obviously, this barn would not be able to fit on its footprint. Values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. The back lot, apparently at common use, with most of butters being late front properties, pointing away at least a quarter of a mile. Number five, A. Enforcement provisions of the ordinance was relative in unnecessary hardship. It would be an unnecessary hardship to construct a residence on the property in order to construct a barn on a private road that I own, be it the road, and both sides of that road. Number two. Opposed use is a reasonable one. Having a structure approximately fifty-five acres is a reasonable use of this land.
Thank you, Kevin. Raylene, do you have a question?
I have a comment about the language in the variance request on item number two. And it has nothing to do with whether I agree or disagree with what is being requested. But if a land, but the properties are separate, so they abut each other, but the item that is requested, the barn, is not on a piece of property with a primary residence. And a budding does not mean, it implies here that because it abuts, it therefore means the spirit. But it's actually two separate pieces of property, correct?
That is correct.
So being in a butter really doesn't meet the letter of what's being regulated. Nobody This argument doesn't make sense as written.
Whose argument? The applicant's?
Yes. My resident abuts, then the spirit of the ordinance is preserved. But it actually isn't, because it abuts, it's not a piece of the, they're two distinct, separate pieces of property. So in other words, they're A and B, not C.
I would like to ask Teresa a question, because Teresa serves also on the planning board.
Did, I did.
You did, okay, but you probably did when these new articles were crafted.
Yes.
But what is the purpose of, of not allowing someone to build a barn on fifty acres of land that they own without a house there? What, what's the purpose of that? It doesn't make a lot of logical sense to me.
I, I don't think that the, a change in the ordinance was in, for a situation like this. It was more of having structures put on properties that somebody didn't intend to occupy in any way, shape or form, but to just put up a dwelling and not be around and using it and that type of thing. Am I correct on that, Joanna?
Yes, my understanding were, was like structures like sunhouses and such to like store your, your lake equipment. And then therefore you could have challenges with squatters and such like that, whereas this is going to have stuff in it that Kevin will be visiting frequently. So the chance of, of, of it being vandalized or used inappropriately and there being a, a problem is, is less.
I think my question is, because as it is stated, is there any other way of stating this?
Are you talking about one of the five criteria, Raylene?
Yeah, I'm talking about this number two.
This number two, yeah.
Because when I, when I read it, and like I say, it has nothing to do with, with the request, which makes sense, you own it, you need a place to store stuff. But it's just as it is stated, I'm just thinking, is there any other way of saying it? Because I don't know the legal language or variance language or anything like that. Where someone wouldn't say, but it abuts, how could they have done that? Because it abuts, it's not a piece of the property. And I don't know that. I'm just asking, is there a way of making it more consistent than this statement states?
Kevin, is there any reason why you're, you're, you don't absorb this fifty-five acres with your other lot?
It's presently an LLC.
It's under different ownership.
No, no, I own both pieces of the property. So, so in defense, if, if it was one lot, then I wouldn't be in front of you with that part of the but since I'm a mother and I bought both lots, I thought that the spirit of the ordinance would be preserved.
Yeah, except it's not with, because the abutting property is abutting and not part of it.
Agreed, but I own both.
You, you could also argue that the spirit of the ordinance is preserved, but the letter of it is not, which is why people are in front of us. It's not like he's trying to put a barn on a one acre lot.
I, I think, I, I think what I'm wrestling with is that very often these things come up, and then later on, people look back and say, how did that happen? Example, should that property be sold? And it's not, one of the properties be sold that abut each other, that allows us to say, well, they abut each other, therefore it's okay. And then later on, these properties become somehow disconnected more than, than they currently are, because now they're owned by one person. And then something else happens, because, well, they, they don't really, they aren't really on the same property. They're abutting, but they already approved it because it was a budding. Am, am I making sense? It's not the here and now, it's what the decision now does allows for something to happen in the future.
And that's what the planning board looks at, is what happens in the future. I mean, we plan for the future, that's part of what the planning board does. And that, that, you make a very good point, Raylene, as to what this spirit of this ordinance is about.
It's not that I'm against it for Kevin doing it now, but I, but I, I raise the concern because ten years from now or five years, who knows? Then we open the door to something else.
Terry? Terry, you had your hand up. I can't hear him, Joanna. Can you hear, I can't hear Terry, he's trying to speak.
Okay, can you unmute me? I, I am muted now, okay.
Good now.
Yeah, I was going to say, the, the spirit of the law, you know, the spirit of the ordinance is actually, applies to the lot that Kevin's asking for, the, the variance for the fifty-five acres. And because he's asking, you know, he's already asking for a variance, you know, he's asking for two different variances, and one is because it's, it, you can't, it's, you're not permitted to build a structure, structure on there without a primary structure. So he's already asking for that, so that it doesn't matter if his house abuts it or doesn't abut it. Because if he wasn't asking for that variance, that might be more of a problem, but because he is, I think that's, you know, kind of a mute. A mute thing.
Raylene?
Okay, so my question is, if we give the variance to Kevin for doing this, the property then gets sold to someone else, does that variance go with the next?
Absolutely. Variances and special exceptions.
So, so it's a perpetuating thing.
Kevin?
I was going to say, I've, I've gone on public record that this is most likely a parting gift for my three kids. So five years, ten years, twenty years, when I'm not here, there is a chance that it'll be subdivided, and I've gone on record, it would be subdivided in a means that it would be at least twelve acre minimum lots, again, between my three kids. Just wanted to state that for the record. And then this barn might be owned by one of the kids.
Without a primary residence?
Well, no, they would be living there and putting a primary residence there. But until that day comes, I plan on using the barn.
Is there any, is there any other way of meeting your needs for the here and now while you're using it, but not later? So that we don't have that perpetuity issue? I, I, I don't know, I'm, it's a question to the board, it's a question of, has this come up before? How has it gotten around?
It's difficult.
I'm not against it, I just want to make sure what happens in the future.
It's difficult for me to see what the perpetuity problems slash concern is. Like, it's a barn. Like, it's a barn. Maybe it's because I homesteaded and started out in a tent, and then I lived in one room of the barn that we built before we had a house. And the barn, the barns are beautiful structures, they can be. They're in keeping with the spirit of this community. I, I don't really have a problem with it at all, honestly. I, I don't see it as a problem in the future. If the barn is there in 100 years, I would say, "Great, I hope he builds it in a manner that-"
If the barn is there in 100 years and something else isn't.
Who cares? And I don't see the issue. In this case, it's not like he's building a congested area with, you know, tons of people that are affected. Raylene?
I rest my case. You've answered my question.
Okay. Anybody else? Board is done asking questions, then I'm going to close the public, no, I'm going to open the discussion up to any abutters. Are there any abutters?
But he, his property, where his house is on a butts that piece of property.
Excuse me, could we have somebody identified, please? Joanna, did, do you-
We do have someone that's listed as iPad, I don't have any idea who this person is, could you please state your name?
I hope you didn't cut her off, or she didn't- God, that again.
Excuse me, iPad user, could you please state your name and go ahead and state, state your comment?
I don't know how to, sorry.
Okay, you're right there, we can hear you now, go ahead.
Oh. Um, I have no comment.
Oh, no comment, okay. Um, can you state your name?
Uh, Sue Paratus.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
Yep.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? First, I'm looking for people who can favor of. If there are none, I'm looking for people to speak in opposition to. You know? Are there any other persons present who wish to speak? Any member of the public?
No, that was the only other member of the public.
Present. So, does the board wish to further discuss this application?
No.
No.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve, uh, the application from Kevin Bassett on case 20 dash 007 dash VA for a variance request from Article 2C2B of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit construction of a barn and attached carport where such a structure is not permitted without a primary structure. And Article 2C1 to permit the structure on a private road.
I'll second it.
Can you also add attached or detached? Because he stated in the beginning that the site-
Okay, yes, correct.
He's talked to the building inspector about possibly having it detached.
Correct. Attached or detached carport.
Terry, do you still second that?
I'll second it.
And we have a motion in front of the board to approve application. And you know how I am, the same way you know- Home. Application for case number-
20 dash 007.
Thank you. To approve this application, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and I'm including in this-
The five criteria.
Five criteria. If anybody wishes them to be taken up separately? Please. Five criteria, always in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Are you abstaining, Raylene?
Yes. Because she doesn't want about one way or the other.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Bassett, your application has been approved. If I- Right, we had- Was that correct? Would be in favor, one abstention? Joanna, as the, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, your application has been approved. Please note that there's a 45-day window with which any member of the public may contest approval, ask for a hearing, or also take the case to court.
Understood. Thank you.
You understood that, okay.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Staff updates now, right?
Yeah.
Say that again?
Staff updates now.
Staff updates in minutes, I believe, we have.
Right.
Do I need to be reset?
Yeah, um, yes, your case is done, you're now re-seeded on the board.
Thank you.
Trusting that everybody, oh, I guess only Terry and I were up for reelection this morning. As the governor provided, by phone. Joanna, would you like to take up the staff updates, or should we do, shall we vote on the minutes first?
Yeah, just go ahead and do minutes.
Okay, so we have in front of us minutes from the January 21st Board of Adjustment meeting, at which I was not present, at which Peter White was present, and he's not present tonight, so we have basically one, two, three persons who can vote on them. No, four.
Four, yeah.
Okay, so, um, does anyone have any comments to make about the draft of the minutes that Joanna sent us? Or have any issues or any suggestions for changes?
Already done.
Should have already been sent to her, but people can still bring it up.
Already done.
No. On these minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the January 21st, 2020 meeting as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. January 21st, 2020 minutes, as presented. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those who abstain, that would be that I wasn't present. Joanna, do you have further staff updates for us?
Okay, so I wanna make sure that it's-
The bylaws and-
Right, the bylaws. Yeah, so I will send those out to you if I didn't already, please, did I send them already?
No.
No, okay, so I will send those out to you before I leave tonight, so that you can review them and we can hopefully approve them. But if you have any suggestions, go ahead and send them back, so I can compile a suggestion of changes list, so that I can send that out to you all.
So just to know that we do this every year, and we review the bylaws, we decide if we need to make any changes, and I'm thinking that it's possible that with meeting by Zoom, there might be some tweet that might be helpful.
Yeah.
Sure, something in the back of your mind. So Joanna, send those out to everybody. And you can read them and, um, make suggestions.
Right.
And then we'll vote on any suggestions as a board.
Yeah. Um, and our next meeting is May 19th. And, uh, as of right now, you'll have, um, the Paradise case possibly for hydro geological study and, um, a Mill Pond Road case for the hydro geological study. So both cases that night will probably be on the same topic.
That's so unusual.
Yes.
I, I can't remember having a hydro geological study to contemplate.
So it might be in your best interest to do a little bit of brushing up on what all that means. And that way, when you receive your material, you're more in the know of what it entails. Okay?
Certainly pass around any info on that topic that you might find.
Okay, I will try to dig up some stuff as well. So I think that, that's all that you are, um, need to be informed of. We, we may or may not be doing another meeting by Zoom, we don't know that yet, until May 4th. Or before, depending on what the governor decides. Okay? So, um, keep an eye on your mailboxes, because I'll send out your case, your material, your mailboxes. And I won't, if, if we are, if, if the, um, stay-at-home is lifted on May 4th, then I won't send your material out ahead of time. Because I, I don't need to send it that, that far in advance. So I will, I will be able to keep it here, and it will be in your binders.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
But we'll still have them on the internet.
I'm sorry, what?
They'll still be on the website, so we can review it.
As always, yes. I'm gonna lift the, um, the mute on the iPad users. Susan Paratus. And, um, if you wanna speak, you're, you're welcome to, okay? Do you have anything you wanna say?
No, not really. Not today. I'm, um, working on the application, that's all.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what she said, just-
You're looking at the application?
Yeah, I'm just working on the application.
Okay. All right. So you just wanted to sit in and see what this was like?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, perfect.
That was smart.
Yes, very smart. All right, well then I will go ahead and mute you then, but, um, feel free to email me if you have anything that you wanna discuss, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, the business of the board having been concluded, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that this meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? I couldn't see Raylene, or she-
No, I'm in favor.
Okay.
All right, bye, everybody.
We wanna party.
Take care, bye.
Bye.
Night, night, everyone.
Good night, everybody, take care.